Board, Rachel Tedesco, John Lawler, Sherri Bates, Roy Gardner, myself, Kevin Riley. Hearing is declared open, 7:01 PM. We have a couple of items on the agenda this evening, there are no minutes. We do have a Form A matter for 374-378 Plymouth Street, which is our Deputy Chief Windsor. Greg, if you want to come up, and Roy, if you want to. Can you bring that up?
How's our technology tonight?
I'm trying to get this sorted through. I'm trying to get something loaded that was sent in, we need to go, and they're working on it right now.
Okay, there we go.
That's the actual plan, right there.
And for the record reflect, our member Diane Phillips has joined us for the meeting this evening. Roy, comments on the, on the Form A?
So, yeah, there was, there was a Form A file Larry Silver's engineering group filed out on behalf of Craig Windsor for a, what was intended according to the application, to be in a state lot at, 388 Plymouth. There's actually two addresses involved, and both of them are involved in that. One of them is, one of them is 388.
378 and 374.
378.
Yeah.
Oh, you're doing. Well, it does, this says 388 on the application.
That's my, 388 is my address, the two addresses in the plan are 374 and 378.
Okay, anyway, the intent was to create, in simple terms, a, a new buildable lot of the The problem I ran into when I was reviewing the logistics behind that is that although it's extremely difficult to find, and without having Larry Silver's plan in hand and some deep dive assistance from the assessors office, we did come up with a, we did two Form A plans in, I believe it's 1993. The office has that stuff right now, they're trying to get it scanned and up so we can see Those two estate lots are created in 1993, use the, the maximum allowance of state lots on a parcel of land in East Bridgewater based under the zoning bylaw, the two that were created. Reason it was difficult to find is that although we did sign a Form A plan here, that Form A plan was never recorded at the registry because it's a land court parcel. Form A was redrawn under land court requirements, and then recorded with the land court. So the plan actually is, is a, a plan of record that is recorded. But if you search through the Registry of Deeds, you can't find it by address, which is one of the, one of the flaws in the land court searching. So, can I have those, those two sheets back? Are they on the, on the, are they up there now?
They should be up there. I tried to look at them like three or four times.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess I have to do one more for you.
Okay, so, so what's up there right now is the, is a, is an annotated view of the 1993 land court plan that created the two estate lots. There's a small, what's, what's actually a legal buildable lot in the front, and there's an estate lot on either side of it. The, the yellow tags are the references that I finally got with the help of the assessors office that give the, the land court plan numbers. So, the, the difficulty we have is that the land can certainly be further subdivided and maintain those two estate lots in their legal form, under the zoning bylaw. But to create another lot, the only way we could create another lot, given the physical shape and size requirements of the two estate lots is through a one lot subdivision, which would actually not look all that different from the plan that was submitted, but it's not a Form A, it's not a Form A plan, it's a one lot subdivision plan. So I did try and pass that information back to Larry and asked that Larry talked to-
He did.
-to Craig about it, just to make sure that it was clear what he needed to do. And I think after we went over all the documents, and Larry did actually, while we were talking, was going through his file and said, he did look at the estate lot plan and, or the, the land court plan, which is effectively the estate lot plan, and did agree that it was actually prepared and recorded with the land court in 1993. The cutoff date for estate lots, I believe, is 1984. So it was done well, well after the estate lot cutoff date, so that's, that's basically all I have.
So, it would appear that this, then, this application would want to be withdrawn and then resubmitted in a different form?
Yeah, the suggestion would be that it be withdrawn without prejudice, and that all the fees be returned to the applicant, and that, and that, when the actual form is, a, a new, new plan has been prepared by the, by the engineer, that it can be resubmitted as a one lot subdivision. I shouldn't say one lot, it should be resubmitted as a subdivision. It could actually be a two lot subdivision, but-
One new lot.
But, right now, he's looking for one new lot, as, as the, as the currently filed plan shows.
Questions, if that makes sense?
The, so, I'll start with, the intent is, I asked the engineer earlier today to withdraw the plan in writing, he apparently did not do that, so that's why I'm here tonight, and that is the intent at this point. The amount of discussion you can have, I'm not really sure how much you want to discuss it, if you'd like me to explain our thought process to get where we were, or just withdraw it and go, up to you.
I mean, I, I think that, you know, certainly if, if the new plan takes essentially the same shape as this, it's, you know, pretty, pretty understandable as to what's trying to be done here. I don't know if members have any particular questions?
If I, if it's allowable, I'll back up a little bit, just one, one point I think we want to make clear, right now we have the existing 374, and we have the existing Form A three-quarter acre lot on the street, with two, we have an existing house and a buildable lot. At the end of this project, the goal is the same, we will still have a buildable lot, we're not going to gain a lot through this. The overall intent, the front half of 378, on that site, we have one of the remains of a foundation of one of the first homes in the East Bridgewater.
No, I was going to ask you just now, what that historical significance was there?
In 1973, my mother, who was one of the original secretaries of the Historical Commission, and Jane Hens and Mrs. Callahan, I believe, all, they marked that site, and they actually didn't dig, dig there and recorded artifacts, things like that. So it was very important to her, and she was actually able to purchase the site in 1986. They bought the eight acre parcel that my lot was peeled off of. So, the goal was, rather than sacrifice the entire buildable lot in the front, was to separate approximately a half acre parcel that contained the important historic site, and just relocate the home site to the two acres adjacent. So that's what this whole goal is, to try to preserve that site, which has absolutely no protection whatsoever. We can plunk a raised ranch right on that Form A as we, as we see fit, and that was not considered in the 1993 subdivision. So, we were attempting to do this, the goal was to do this as simple as possible, and felt that since 374 and 378 had never been under separate ownership, it still qualified as contiguous, with a total of four and a quarter acres, four and a half acres between the two, so we just wanted to rearrange the lines. My lot was separated in 1993, I own that with my wife, but 374 and 378 have been contiguous since the dawn of time, probably including one of the first home sites in East Bridgewater. So we felt that we were okay to break that into an additional estate lot, but Roy has spoke with Larry directly, and Larry agreed that the, the one lot subdivision would accomplish the same through a few more hoops.
All right, so-
Just for, for quick point of reference, that's the, that's an actual copy of the land court plan that created-
Yeah.
This, this front lot, which is estate lot one, and this rear lot, which is estate lot two.
So there's no issues with the size of the lot or the place of it, but just with the legality of it?
Well, there's plenty of area there, the, the, a minor complication is that, that I'm sure long term, and I think it's clear from the plan and my discussions with Larry, is that, is that the two house lots, the houses, if we, if we go back, that's how the houses are located?
Yes.
There's a common driveway that's used, which makes sense, it's basically a family compound.
Okay, so that thin line, yeah, that in the middle.
This, this would, would be the, the access to the new lot, which would be cut off somewhere here.
Oh, okay.
I think what, what he's also trying to do is, is to, to get separate access to the real lot. There was going to be another, another piece of land cut off of this existing piece that would allow you access to this real lot. So it would still retain its, its legal description as an estate lot, it would still retain minimum 40 feet of frontage on a public way, and it would still retain its, its minimum two acres, because right now it's, it's, what is it, 375, it's almost four acres.
Yeah, it's about four and a half acres that's contiguous right now, we want to free up the half acre too.
So this, this front piece here would be cut somewhere around 40 feet this way, and a little bit off the back, the little piece off the back would go with this, this parcel, and leave roughly half an acre left, which is, as is noted on Larry's original plan, the original Form A, as, as a historic site?
Yeah, I've met with the Historical Commission, and they agree it's a site of value, and they are willing to take control of that under town ownership.
Oh.
The, the goal is it'll be donated to the town under the Historical Commission, so they'll regulate it, it won't be sold off, or whatever.
Okay.
Again, there's absolutely no protection for this site, it's just something that was important to my mother. She wanted to give away the whole Form A lot, and we were kind of like, eh, yeah, we've got a whole lot, but, you know, so we're just trying to move that value over to the left, and not get greedy and bang in one lot. I have a, a friend that's interested in the lot, he'd be a good fit for it, so.
So, there would be a, maybe a new building up on the upper left, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, if you, if you could switch over to the plan that we initially presented, it, it would show the ultimate goal, and we're about three quarters of the way down, right there, yeah. If we pop over to that, it would show the, the ultimate goal, and the zigzag there, we knew we wouldn't be allowed to bring my estate lot into it to take that triangle off in this plan, so the intention was to do that as a land swap later on to straighten the lines out. That's why we have that parcel B, I think he calls it, that small parcel off the rear, that would be attached to my lot to maintain my two acres after a land swap to get rid of that triangle, keep the frontage nice.
Okay.
So I, I think to try and be clear, the, the, the new lot that's getting created would enter here?
Yep, 65 feet or so, we'd have 40 for the existing 374.
This piece would be the, would be the future access at some point to the back house?
Yeah, probably sooner rather than later, because that's going to go outside the family, as is the, the other parcel, so.
Okay.
And then the, the, the access to the, to the front house or to the front estate lot, I, I would expect would remain the same where it is?
Yeah, my, my, there's no changes proposed to mine, mine, my lot's not part of this, out of this proposal, other than a, a land swap to clear that little useless triangle off, and straighten out the frontage, that would be phase two of this proposal. On the, if we go the one lot subdivision route, we'll probably be able to do that all in one sweep, pull that triangle off of mine, keep a nice straight line there.
You can do everything all at the same time.
Yes. And then we'll come in, we'll just kind of model it, they're all over the place, that there's plenty of references on these one lot jobs. In fact, the one behind me, Whitmore Lane, is a one lot.
Yes, yeah.
And that's fairly recent, too. So I did a, we peeled a small triangle, a small, whatever, 15, 1500 square foot piece off of the back of my lot, when they did Whitmore Lane, so they could get the building square, and that, that's why the line's a little funny on the bottom right corner, that was so they could fit Whitmore Lane in that.
Oh, that bottom, okay.
He needed the building square. Oh, that's where we're at, back to the drawing board literally, and, and we'll come back, Larry has a pretty good idea of what we need to do.
So-
Requested withdrawal at this point.
So one, kudos for the idea of, of, you know, protection of that historic site. Two, we'll treat Roy's earlier discussion as a motion to accept withdrawal on the Form A application without prejudice, and either return all fees to the applicant, or to allow those to be applied to a new submission for a subdivision plan. Second to that motion?
I second that.
Motion is made by Mr. Gardner, seconded by Mrs. Tedesco. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor of that motion, so signified by saying aye-
Aye.
And opposed, unanimous vote of all regular members present. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We will see you again.
Thanks, Greg.
We will. Next meeting will be-
April 1, April 15. All right. Thank you.
Is that a good day to have a meeting, April 1st?
Yeah, that way if you don't like the plan, I'll just say it.
That's right.
That's the only one in April.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Greg. That actually, yeah, the first of the 15th.
Oh, yeah, Marjorie. Yeah, she was on that.
The 15th, yeah.
So there's no meeting, only one meeting in the, in, in your home?
Um, Margaret, he's, no, no.
No.
It's not, Marjorie Windsor.
Oh, 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 oh.
She was on the 12th committee.
May 6th.
Yes, she was, not, um-
I'm going to do, master plan, next, OCP.
Okay.
Yes, being 7:15, we invite our friend on the master plan to come up and-
Hi.
Hi. My name is Laurie Mancy, I work with Old Colony Planning Council. Rhianne is double booked tonight, so I'm here in her place.
Well, there you go.
I have a little handout for you.
Good, thank you.
It gives you an update of what's going on so far, and a list of questions that we hope to get answered from you, so that we can keep moving on this plan.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Wish her, wish her. Yeah. That's okay, that's fine.
I have, so actually, I might need to share, I thought I had made extras, and I'm short one copy. You know, I can give it back to you in general.
Do we need more copies? I can make more copies.
I, I just need one.
You can take Roy's, I'll give Roy mine.
Yeah, that's amazing.
So far, yeah, 746, yes, that's really good for a town this size. As you can see, what we've got done so far, the first two of three meetings, the steering committee, we've met a few times, the survey, and the interviews with all the departments have been conducted, I think that's probably why I'm here with you tonight, and you're doing your interview, but the staff has been talking to everyone. Right now, everybody's writing their chapters, I think Rhianne's going to get you clusters of chapters at a time for review and comment, then we'll go to formatting, and then we'll come in for listening sessions and finish it all up once, wrap it up at that point. Today, the question's at the bottom, and that's what concerns the planning board. I don't know if, which is a better format to go through this, if it's something that you want to take home and deliberate, or if you already know and you can just rattle them off. I can hear, I'm here to jot them all down, and get them into the chapters. So if we can just go one by one. What consumes most of the planning board's time? I'm assuming you do a lot of Form As, small subdivisions, but what carries the bulk of your time?
Special permits, probably.
Yeah, probably special permits.
And are they often for a particular cause?
Our, the, the zoning bylaw here is, is sort of written in a, in a unique, well, I won't say unique, but an interesting, an interesting way, shall I say, where most of the zones, if you go through the, the bylaws, are, you know, would have a series of allowed uses, disallowed uses, and special permit uses. The special permit uses being those that the planning board considers to be consistent with other uses in the district. So a lot of the time, what we're seeing is those kinds of things coming in, because there is not a lot under allowed uses, it's, they're, they're sort of very general and sparse. So, you know, things are coming in for those reasons, more toward the, the ultimate use question than anything else.
So like site plan review? You do a lot of site plan review for a special permit?
Site plan review, you know, it's either coupled with the special permit, or it can be independent in some cases.
And are they mostly commercial permits, or for the most part? That's good. And what are the current goals and wants of the board?
Anybody have particular thoughts on that?
Sometimes you call priorities.
So let me, let me, let me kind of add on to Kevin's comments that, that I think addressed both one and two. The zoning bylaw, we have it now, is basically, for all intention purposes, effectively rewritten in 1987, shortly after we completed the current master plan, which is actually dated 86 and 87, as I'm sure you've noticed.
Has it been updated since then? Has not been updated?
We've, we've twice, twice started to try and update it, and really didn't see any serious need to do that since there's no major differences in the, in the structure of the town from the, I believe it was 11 geographical areas that had been outlined in the 1987 master plan. They still look pretty much the same.
Yeah.
And what we did at that point in time is we took Old Colony Planning Council's advice in, when we made some, let's say structural changes, in that, in, in virtually all of the districts, we used pretty much the structure that, that Kevin had just mentioned, and that is that we had a list of allowed uses, a list of specially permitted uses, and those, those typically are all in the commercial districts. The residential districts typically only have allowed uses listed and prohibited uses. And in, in the residential districts, they're, they're pretty much defining as allowed, those things that are, that are defined as residential within each of the individual districts, which is based pretty much on, on the type of residence, single family, two family, multifamily, so on and so forth. There is special permit requirements for multifamily units, and, and those requirements are basically limited on determining that access egress and parking is suitable, that to serve multi, you know, multifamily areas. The trouble we started to run into in, in 87, when we were rewriting the bylaws, we wanted to avoid adding 100 pages to it, like you see in some of the bigger cities, where virtually every single commercial type use you have is listed individually.
Yeah.
And every requirement for those commercial type uses is listed individually. And the table for things like access egress and parking and all of those takes up dozens, if, if not hundreds of pages in, in bigger zoning bylaws, typically cities.
Right.
But some of the towns actually have it that way.
Yeah, I see.
Every single potential use, literally from A to Z-
Yeah.
-has, has requirements. So what we did, based on the fact that, as I'm sure you've already realized, is we don't have an awful lot of, of high-end commercial uses in the town, we treated everything under 10,000 square feet that's an allowed use can just go get building permits. Everything over 10,000 square feet in the, in the commercial zones, both industrial and business, well, over 10,000 square foot building implies there's some kind of intensive use. So those we treated as special permits, so we could see parking requirements and actual use, what was the real use of the building going to be, so, so we could look out in, in the, the general standard usage categories that are available, and most architects and engineers have those these days, to see what kind of parking and things we would have. So one of my thoughts would be, it would be nice if, if in a, a revision to our zoning bylaw, we could find a way to better define access egress and parking needs, so that we wouldn't end up with, with a very, very limited amount of in-bylaw parking requirements, and require virtually every applicant in the, in the business district to come tell us what he's going to do.
That's not a new thing, actually, everyone's kind of relooking at their parking regulations, and not only in commercial, but also residential.
Yes.
So, definitely, we'll look at that.
I was at the CPTC seminar this weekend.
Oh, this weekend, yeah.
And that was one of the things that was discussed.
Yeah, it's a big thing now, reducing parking requirements, so that we don't end up with acres of asphalt, like the old malls, that end up to be stormwater, you know, nightmare at the end of the day.
The, the problem is you have to dance that, that somewhat fine line of, we want enough parking, and we don't want, want a lot of extra, but we want to make sure that enough is, is regularly enough.
Yeah, and I think-
Which is, which is a difficult dance to do.
I think the balance from people from our generation is we remember the malls, we remember the Christmas parking, and we remember, but now shopping and all of that has changed a lot, where, you know, we're, the malls are gone for the most part, and we have different ways of buying, and, so, yeah, that's why we need to look at, do we need 10,000 spaces for everyone to shop at the same moment of the day?
Now, unlike my friend here, I am an attorney by trade, and I come from, you know, the experience of many communities where things are set out in more detail in zoning bylaws, uses, and I sort of prefer that. I don't want 100 pages, but at the same time, I want more definition than what's, than what we have, and I understand, you know, what Roy's saying, and why, you know, it was done, but I just find the other approach to be a little bit more useful. The other thing I would say is, really, Roy, the only thing we see residentially is a, is a Form A or a subdivision, we don't have, the way that the bylaws are structured, most everything else, you know, in terms of any sorts of relief, would go to the ZBA.
So ZBA would take care of ADUs, do you have that, accessory dwelling units in town?
Yes.
You have that by right, or by permit?
I've never looked at it on a, on a residential basis, but all of that-
We do, we do have that, and, and we just adopted it a couple of years ago, and I'm not going to be able to tell you whether that was done through the planning board or the, the zoning board of appeals without actually checking the bylaw real quick.
Yeah, we'll check it, too.
But we do, we do have accessory dwelling units in town now.
Yeah, that's good.
And they are treated as, and I think what we actually call them is expanded family unit, and the intent is, is that they be limited to family occupancy.
That can become challenging when occupancy and ownership changes, as far as monitoring for a town's perspective, like, they're not going to come in and tell the, the permitting official, you know, my son has, you know, moved and got married and left the in-law that I had for him, now can I rent it out to a college student that I might not be related to? And towns that had the requirement for the family restriction, they can get some challenges.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at one of those now, because-
Yeah, just as- Yeah, just as ever.
We're looking at a potential future in-law at my daughter's house in Foxborough for us. And they have a ten-page bylaw for their expanded family unit.
And unfortunately, people put a lot of money into these units when they, you know, permit them, they construct them, and then they use them, maybe they have an elderly parent who lives for nine years. And then the mortgage is thirty, or twenty, or fifteen. They really need someone to move in and recoup that investment. So that can be a constraint to a lot of people, but that's just something to think about.
So give us some suggestions from Old Colony Planning Council's wide background as to how we could grant a second living unit within a single-family home. Constrain it, constrain it for some length of time to a family member.
We don't really, like I said, we don't really encourage people to...
So it doesn't work in East Bridgewater then?
Yeah.
Because we, we don't want, we don't want three thousand two-family homes in the town of East Bridgewater. Wouldn't, first of all, if we would have presented that way at town meeting, it wouldn't have come close to getting enough votes, number one.
Yeah.
Because we tried several different things on this, and we finally got it passed when we, we constrained it tightly to a, to a family, family member only, and it can't be commercially rented.
A lot of people constrain it by size because, you know, they're usually a lot smaller than a regular apartment or dwelling unit. So that kind of prohibits who can live there. But, yeah, it's something, we can give you some options to look at and consider. A lot of towns, they try to regulate it by affordability and place affordability restrictions for deed restrictions on the deed that goes with the property. So, you know, there's several ways to get around it. And the state also has their own thinking on it. They're talking by right now, and they have a template out to show that perspective. So there's a lot of ways to, to get there. It's just how, what's most comfortable for the community.
Well, assuredly, since we do have...
That's good, no.
Bylaw.
Yeah, at least you have something in place, because a lot of towns don't.
How enforceable those will be long-term, I have no idea. How you would enforce them long-term, I have no idea.
That's the, that's the hard part, is you're putting a restriction on that, you know, can have limited enforceability, well, without a little bit of intrusiveness. But that's up for you.
As, as the chairman noted, we could have a signed covenant recorded at the registry, which is actually what the town of Foxborough does that we're looking at right now.
Yeah.
In the town of Foxborough, you actually have to tear the kitchen out.
Yeah, I've seen so many configurations. And a lot of people, like they'll fight back with the cultural, I've seen. You know, like some cultures have the...
Extended families.
Two kitchens, the upstairs kitchen that we don't touch and downstairs kitchen that we do touch. So it's just on how you want your town to look. Did you have more, Mr. Riley? I, I didn't really get your whole thought.
So, you know, that's, that's what I, you know, in terms of, of use and such, I think that would ultimately make our job a little bit easier. And I think it would make for more consistency across, you know, the town. The other thing that, you know, personally, I think needs attention is the Route eighteen corridor itself, just in terms of kind of, right now, it's sort of a mishmash of, of different zones and such. And I think that, you know, just an idea as to how that would play itself out and probably more particularly going north from the center out to the Whitman Line. You know, it's a mix of residences, offices, large office building. You know, you've got new housing that will be coming in. So, you know, just to kind of work that through. Any other comments, thoughts, guys?
Diane and I are new to the, to the planning board.
Oh, you joined? Oh, okay.
It's July, so we're just, I'm just learning.
Awesome.
I presume the same is true for Diane. But one of my concerns is the balance of, you know, I, I think we, we do need more housing in Massachusetts, definitely, and affordable housing. So, but I'm also concerned about a balance that, so our natural resources are also protected at the same time, that we don't overbuild in a sensitive area. So, you know, I, I certainly applaud the, the state for pushing for more development. I think it's needed all over, so.
Yeah, for sure. The rents are crazy.
The rents...
And it's not us that are really suffering, it's my kids and our kids and their kids. Yeah, I couldn't even tell you what my daughter's paying. And I keep saying, oh, you should probably move home. But not.
So you'd, you'd build a second unit.
Yeah. Well, I have one for my dad already, but I have him in a little tiny house. And I was fortunate to have that, and it works out so well because he's a little bit dementia already. So he's ninety feet away.
Yeah, that's so perfect, yeah. I, I don't know if this is one of our goals, but I, and I, correct me, but I know our board is over, overworked, and have you not talked about having a town planner or brought that up? Is that something that would fit as a goal for our looking, because you have looked at that in the past?
Should probably be our number one goal, actually. We need a town planner in town. We actually had a salary for, well, let's see, a salary slot approved at town meeting. It was either two or three years ago, maybe even four years ago now. But that salary slot was way below what any credentialed planner would be willing to take, as we found out after the fact.
And there's a shortage right now, like incredible, incredible, incredible.
From, from what I gathered in our, in our session Saturday up in Worcester at Holy Cross, a small group of planners that were sitting at the table that I was sitting at have all changed jobs in less than three years for lucrative advances to other positions. And they're already being solicited by other communities at even higher salaries. So...
Yes.
There's, there's not enough planners in, in a lot of communities, especially in southeastern Massachusetts. A lot of our small towns never had a planner.
And then our region especially, like we have it in the office, the actual numbers, but it's like maybe half our towns don't have planners. So we kind of fill in the gaps, but we keep encouraging everyone to...
Go into their field.
So some, some kind of wording in the, in the master plan...
Yeah, it'll definitely be in there.
Would imply a town of our size with the, the long-term growth and things like that that are expected in, in the future. We really need someone, a professional doing that.
With all the federal money, because I'm working on, when I leave here tonight, a federal application. And let me tell you, it's not fun. And it's due on April first. They always give you like this little tiny window of, yeah, and ask for fifty pages of stuff. So with all that opportunity out there, you'd probably get your money back really quick.
Oh, yeah, in grants.
In grant money, investment and opportunity.
Right. That's interesting, that's...
So number three was, are there bylaws that you feel need updating? So obviously a few. But this question in particular has to do with repetitive ZBA applications. And I'm not sure if you guys would be the right people to answer that. But oftentimes, especially setbacks, or, it just depends on the community, but sometimes they have outrageous setbacks fifty foot from the front or something ridiculous. And people want to put the house twenty-five feet, and they're always going for a variance, every other applicant. So it's a waste of time for everybody and resources to send all these people to ZBA for a variance that ninety-five percent of the time you're going to give. So are there...
Except legally, they can't. Legally, they can't grant them.
I know.
A lot of towns just grant them out of hand, so.
Some towns grant, none, none. Some are very, very hard, and others are giving them out like candy. And the way the law reads, no one really should be getting them, like for the most part.
Technically, absolutely.
So I have always said, we need to look at the law or, but that's not going to happen. So always look at the municipal level at first and see if there's some kind of adjustments we can make to your zoning bylaws where you won't have twenty-five applications in front of the ZBA for a setback or...
I don't think they ever see setback requests. I, I know twice in, it's been a long time now, but over, over the last eight or nine years, there's been a couple where they wanted to put a porch on the front of a house, and the, the house was already set at the setback line.
Yeah.
I, I think both of those, if I remember correctly, were granted, but...
Now, if anything pops up when you're kind of perusing around, or I'm sure Rhianne will contact ZBA and ask them for their opinion as well, but just while I'm here.
We do actually have a fifty-foot setback requirement for most of our single-family homes.
Is it fifty?
But, but to put that into context, our single-family homes have to be on thirty-five thousand square foot lots, and there's a building square that you can fit theoretically, if you were going to go crazy, within the building square that's within the setbacks, you could fit a ten thousand square foot house. So, I mean, there's, there's really no reason, unless it was constrained by Whitman's or something like that, where you, you'd want to worry about the, the front setback, but...
A lot of the planning schools are kind of, depending on where you're working, they're trying to get people back from the back deck into the front porch again. I don't know if you've heard that kind of technology, but, yeah, because...
What's the reasoning for that?
For a generation, well, before me, let's talk about my grandmother's generation. Everyone had front porches.
Along the street.
Along the street, they sat there, they socialized, they watched their neighbors. Then the generation moved to the deck in the back of the house. No one's talking to each other anymore. You're, you're, you know, you're back away from, so now it's more dense. Push them up forward, more walkability, more sociability, that kind of, just kind of rethinking.
They weren't a thousand cars an hour going down the street in your grandmother's time either, though.
Yeah, and, you know, back then, we had the schools on every corner, it seemed like, especially when we were Catholic and took the nuns. So the Catholic schools everywhere, so we all walked. But then, you know, we came a bus generation later with mega schools. And I think part of the community's a rethinking three thousand-person schools and, you know, more walkability. So just a little seed to plant, if it's interesting. But I, I personally love front porches. I think they're attractive. But I have a deck too. Are there any zoning changes you'd like to see over the next ten years?
Other than the MP TA district that we're working on right now.
You and everybody else.
I think, I, I think, given the town, where the town is built out to, the amounting, the amount of land remaining that's buildable, other than some of the commercial and industrial stuff, especially along the Route eighteen corridor, I think what we could do on the residential side would be very limited because I, I think it would, it would look, maybe this is overstated, but I think it would look too different from the existing development in town, which is, I think OCPC had told us, I'm thinking a decade or so ago now, that roughly sixty-eight to seventy-some odd percent of the buildable land in town is built on. Now, that's based on the fact that we didn't have a municipal wastewater system and, and we have significant issues with, with Title V systems in our town, high groundwater, low, low ground flow and stuff like that, so...
Yeah.
But just recently, when the high school was built, actually, I say recently, it's almost ten years ago now, give or take, we had a municipal plant put in to handle the high school. It's got a, it's got a package plant, thirty thousand gallon a day package plant, with a space in the building and piping capability for a second thirty thousand gallon a day package plant, which was intended to be used primarily for the, for the town buildings, the school, and then the downtown area, which we'd like to see rebuilt. Now, certainly, if we could come up with some kind of well-thought-out zoning plan for downtown, that would take into account the fact that municipal sewerage is available, that would be a good thing. Part of our discussion on the MP TA zoning is that we have been contemplating and haven't decided yet, but we may have two districts in the MP TA zoning bylaw, one of those being downtown. It doesn't exactly meet the state description of what they consider downtown. Because what they really want to see in their grand view of how all of that thing should work is that the downtown areas, the area centered around the station, well...
You don't have one.
We don't have, in fact, our downtown is roughly equidistant, as far away as you can get from all five of the stations that are in our, quote, abutting towns.
Yeah.
Two in Brockton, Bridgewater, Hanson.
I know, I feel for towns like this in Plimpton, who, you know, they're tiny, teeny, tiny and wet. They can only, you know, they're just so constrained by the soils and, you know, the water tables.
But we have, the last piece of that is, we, we do have a current signed intermodal agreement with the city of Brockton to provide municipal sewerage in the industrial land north of Grove Street all the way to the Whitman Line. So that roughly starts at Compass Medical Center and goes all the way to the Whitman Line. That's the intended area that would be municipally sued. That's also the major area that we're looking at to zone as part of the MP TA zoning district.
And that's the new line you're getting, right? Or is that an existing line?
No, it's not there right now.
Yeah, it's the new one.
It's in the design process. I think since we started negotiating that, this is probably now, probably year six. We actually signed an agreement with them, I believe now, two years ago. Engineering was, initial engineering was pretty much completed about a year ago. We've, we've committed money at our previous annual town meeting, three or four million dollars, I believe. We have a grant, I'm thinking it's around three or four million dollars as well, which if we don't vote in the MP TA zoning district, we may not get. But, but that's, that's, that's for discussion at another time.
Doesn't mean it's going to get built. You know the sewer line would get built.
Well, there's, there's significant reason, you know, why we need that, obviously. Compass Medical Center, I assume you know who that is? It's a, well, it's not Compass anymore, but...
They're all changing.
Signature Medical Center.
Yeah.
That has one of the largest reseptic systems in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
My goodness, I didn't know that.
It's, it's, it's close to the, it looks like a football field, and it's like ten feet above the ground. It's a Title V system.
It's because it's medical, I'm sure they had to have...
It's got other things with it. It's got a bunch of chambers in front of it and stuff like that, whatever else is required because it's a medical building. But, but they don't have a municipal sewer system there. I think, I think Equity Industrial Partners, which owns that entire parcel, had looked at putting in a packaged treatment plant there. But part of the problem there is, is the, the low permeability of the soil and the high groundwater table.
Yeah.
So even, even a packaged treatment system with, with in-ground disposal, even deep injection in-ground with disposal would be a problem because the water table is just, just under the surface. So that municipal sewer system, you know, through the city of Brockton is, is something that we've actually been working on for almost thirty years. But it got real serious again about six years ago. In, in part because Brockton was forced by the state to get their stormwater out of their, out of their sewer system.
Helps.
And clean up the sewer system itself in terms of how it operated. And, and that created effectively a bunch of additional capacity that they didn't have before. Well, they had, but they were using it, running clean water through their system that was infiltrating or coming from stormwater, but...
Do you have any other changes you'd like to see before we go to the next one? No, okay. How will the ongoing population increase in town impact your work over the next ten years?
I don't think it's going to change significantly.
I didn't think it was that significant. I'm, I'm sitting here going, I'll have to look at that data, I have it in my computer, but...
I think it was a decrease in population.
Yeah, I didn't think it was, yeah. I think maybe she meant something.
Been pretty consistent for the last thirty years. It's been pretty consistent for the last thirty years.
I didn't see any jumps.
There was that big bump in, in nineteen, uh.
Back when everyone was building.
Nineteen eighties, let's say the nineteen eighties.
Mm-hmm.
But since then, the, the additional units on a, on an average yearly basis have been pretty consistent for pretty much an entirety of the, the thirty years since then, since, uh.
What would you like to see from the master plan? Like, do you have a goal, like the main goal for the planning board, or three main goals that you'd like to see? Or is there a vision, um, that you have, that you'd like to encompass?
I'd, I'd like to see some creativity and guidance as to what an, what an outside planning group sees in our town that could potentially be done that, that, let's say, doesn't appear to fit in the current zoning structure that we have. I, I think our current master plan, as old as it may be, pretty much defined what our, defines what our town looks like, which, which I think it did then, and I think it still does, 'cause I, I don't, realistically, other than the, the growth in the years, the town has not changed very much. The population has increased. The town is still ninety-plus percent residential, still eighty-five, give or take, a percent or two, uh, single-family homes. That basically hasn't changed since, since, since my wife and I moved to town in, in nineteen seventy-nine. Still, I, I, if you took a graph of percentages, I don't think they've changed at all in forty years.
Yeah, it's kind of consistent. Even the Hockamock Swamp sign there, Hockamock Licos, I think that's been there my whole life.
The same one.
The same sign, I love it though.
Things typically don't change a lot in East Bridgewater, historically.
Anything else you would like to?
I mean, I think, I think that, you know, it will be nice just to have something that is out there that everybody can get on board with and, and have the same vision for, you know, how things should be developed and how they should look, um, because I think now there's some separation in that, and, um, you know, I think, I think this would be a good aid in, in, um, in, you know, kind of bringing that back together and getting everybody marching in the same direction.
That's a tough call lately.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, that's true, but, you know, it's, I, I think.
We'll do our best.
No, but I think, I think with, you know, experience that I've seen in other communities, I mean, I think that is, it, it, having that becomes an important tool, that, you know, okay, hey, the town has invested X amount of resources into this plan, if we're not gonna follow it, why did we bother, you know, so.
Create a sense of community with it too. This is what we leave for our children, and how we hope to leave them a better place. And what can we do to help you implement the master plan? I know suggesting a planning person, for sure, town planner, would help a million bit, um, but what else can we?
I think, like, looking at what we have and seeing, making those suggestions will be helpful. Like, are there any gaps that we have? And looking ten years forward, things are gonna change. Technologies will change, so we need to be current in that approach. And, um, I don't know, if you have that crystal ball to look ten years forward, will it change that much, or maybe we're fine?
Oh, I, when you think of ten years back, how much we've changed, and, and just the pandemic has changed us. But I think the way to address something like that would be at least yearly reevaluation of your, your goals, your strategies, what you've done to get to those goals and strategies, and, and look at them, are they still important? If not, do we need to, you know, readdress them or revise them? But at least it keeps everyone focused on the topic. If you had, um, meetings with the department heads every year, so that they could report out to you on what they've done with their sections, whether it's, you know, open space, or highway department, or whoever, you know, you have in front of you, make a plan so that it's an active document and not something that we refer to occasionally when we're forgetting to what we were thinking about. But if it's part of a work plan and someone has responsibility, like if everyone has a role, but there's no leader, then it's, it never gets done. In, in municipal government, we can all go like this, and we get town meeting, and get taxes, and, but if somebody's job is to look at this once a year, or every six months, or whatever the town thinks is appropriate, and set up a procedure for reevaluation implementation, that's kind of what we, I can mirror something from the HMP language, and I'm writing those last year, because that's a federal requirement by FEMA, that when you do a hazard mitigation plan, it has to be an active plan, and has to have somebody's name on it, and they have to sign that they've done X, Y, and Z, and maybe even had like template reports included in there. So we can look at something like that, if that's a help.
Mm, I think, yeah.
Yeah. Sounds good. Other questions, comments?
Yeah, we're gonna find a way to make East Bridgewater a destination, and bring business into it before we do anything else. You know what I mean? We're rearranging the deck chairs of the Titanic, that's what we're doing.
I don't think we're gonna sink.
I'm sorry?
I don't, I don't feel we're sinking.
I didn't say we were sinking, but we just, I've been here for forty-four years. Nothing's changed in forty-four years. Go through the center of town, it's not kept up anymore, why? Other, other towns come and they say, well, let's put flower pots out front, and as long as the business owner will water them, we'll provide them, we'll take care of them, this or that. Do something.
I totally agree, Chuck.
Do something to make it look like we care.
Oh, yeah, I see.
I went to Chicago, the mayor stopped at my friend's house, and he says, buy me a cup of coffee, I'm gonna make you a lot of money today. He bought every piece of property he had, but he did that. He painted the ash barrels for people. They'd come around, they'd pick them up, they'd paint them, they'd put the flowers out. What do we do? My, my business is in Middleborough. Every year they put out flowers, the dealers, if you water them, we'll, we'll, we'll put the, the plants out there, we'll put them up, we'll hang them up there for you. We gotta, we gotta get together and do something. I care about this town, I've been here forty-four years. I've seen different parts of Boston, I see how, how they deteriorate, and I've seen other parts that grow. Let's agree on something.
So maybe streetscape improvements or something like that?
I totally second that, Chuck.
And facade?
Absolutely. Let's make it worth the business owners' wild, wild, they'll put a painter, a coat of paint on their building.
Kind of take pride in your community.
You have to, 'cause otherwise you get nothing. If you don't care about your town, neither does anybody else.
And do you have areas in town where you'd like to see a particular character? Um, like a form-based code where all the buildings on this street would be?
I'll tell you what I was gonna do thirty years ago. Across from the post office in this town, the Bob, building inspector was Bob Blumberg. I brought up a, a set of plans, and I said, I wanna make, I wanna buy that land across from the post office, and I wanna put in buildings that the facade looks like Disney World. Downstairs was gonna be fishmongers, cobblers, and upstairs was gonna be a guild. And you know what he told me? He says, you'll never get anywhere with it, because it'll be talked to death, and the lawyers will get all the money. And that's exactly what happened. So I went and I bought a building in Middleborough. Broke my heart to move out, out of East Bridgewater, but I did. So you gotta get some people with some foresight to sit down one time only, not talk it to death, and figure, what are we gonna do, and let's look forward with it. You know, I'm getting old, you know? I wanna see something done before I'm gone.
Now, would the town be receptive to some form-based code in areas?
No idea.
Or is that, should be a survey question, right? We should have asked that in the survey.
I would say, yeah. With some kind of description in the question as to what a form-based code is, 'cause most people wouldn't, wouldn't know what that means.
But we still have to, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. We still gotta attract business.
A hundred percent.
We have one of the highest tax base rates in the, in the state. We get great cops, we get great firemen, uh, you know, first responders, what else?
I was actually in a meeting with Duxbury, and they thought they had the highest tax rate in this state.
Well, the Duxbury's in a class by itself.
They don't, their taxes are a lot lower.
No disrespect to Duxbury, but.
To be honest, their taxes are a lot lower.
Well, people, I, I think people, people interchange the term "tax rate" with, with "tax bill." They're two totally different things.
I agree.
Bazillion square foot-sized house gets a bazillion square foot-sized tax bill.
I mean, two friends of mine that I've, that I know and see regularly, that I used to work with for, for over forty years, think their taxes in, in Sharon are obscene, and they're, they're both in million-plus houses.
Exactly, yeah.
But their tax rate is less than ours.
Exactly, that's what the point was, they, I think they were like fourteen and change, and I'm like, wait a minute, they're not that high, actually. Well, you have this paper with Rhiannon's email on this. Feel free to email her anytime. Um, I'd give you mine if you want it, but everything should probably go through Rhiannon, she'll send it up to me. If you have any questions, or you come up with any thoughts that you just wanna email, and you didn't wanna speak out loud, or, or came to you when you were doing something else, send them over, because we're drafting now, so these last-minute comments will really be helpful in the narrative.
So, I have a very specific question that, that I can, I can email to Rhiannon, but I'll, I'll ask you it to begin with. It's one of the questions that I asked in, in the seminar Saturday, is that typically when you have an overlay district, and overlay district is, is, is built to allow some type of use, obviously, but it's, it's defined in a district that's as much, that's much la- larger rather than the use itself will need. Because you're not gonna, you're not trying to tell them exactly where to put it. You're trying to say, put it in this area.
Correct.
Now, we've done that, and, and our first experience with help from O'Carroll Planning Council, and, and some pirating from several other communities of their bylaw, uh, we adopted an over twenty-five, I'm sorry, over fifty-five bylaw in the town, which allowed what we consider very high-density, small-unit, single-family housing, like six units an acre.
Mm-hmm.
Over, restricted to over fifty-five, based on what the definition of over fifty-five is under state law. And, and that, that, uh, bylaw has what, what, back then, under planning, and I still assume today, has what's called a circuit breaker in it. When you hit a certain percent of units in, in relation to the number of units in your town, then the bylaws effectively gets suspended until the number of units in your town increases, and then you can, and, and the intent is to try and make sure that, because back then, it was extremely lucrative to, to build those. And we didn't wanna see all of the remaining buildable land built with six-unit, single-family, over fifty-five housing on it with, which would end up with fifty percent of the units in, in town restricted to over fifty-five housing, 'cause that destroys the cross-sectional character of a community. So, we're in a similar situation with the MPDA zoning bylaw. We're not trying to dictate, because we don't have a good way to dictate exactly where to put it. We've been contemplating zoning in area that's, that's roughly four times the minimum area we need to zone, all as part of the MPDA zoning district. Let the developer determine how he wants to build it out and how, where he wants to exactly put buildings.
Yeah, that's how it's.
But, but what we also wanna do, based on the requirement that the, the number of units that the town needs is just over five hundred, based on the percentage that they calculate from the, you know, from the number of housing units in town.
Mm-hmm.
That we wanna put some kind of circuit breaker in that says when we hit some number, at that number or slightly above, that the, that the overlay isn't available until the number of housing units in the town increases.
Yeah, I haven't seen that used anytime recently, a circuit breaker. Um, yeah, that's an, that would be, I mean, I don't know about that one.
The problem we have, if we just limit it to the number of housing units at fifteen, you know, 'cause it could be fifteen units an acre, if we limit it to just to X, well, fifteen times the number of acres to get to five oh five.
Exactly.
Then that's never, we'll never get to five oh five. 'Cause no one in the town of East Bridgewater is gonna build an entire complex of fifteen-unit-per-acre housing.
I don't think anyone's gonna build all of this housing that there's only.
No, absolutely not.
Yeah, no, that's not even gonna happen.
But, but, but that's not the problem we have. The problem we have is, is when I'm trying to go to town meeting and explain to town meeting that if we zone a hundred and fifty acres under the MPDA district, then as a right, it has to be fifteen, minimum fifteen units an acre. People can quickly do the math and say, well, that's like two thousand units.
Exactly, but that doesn't mean they're gonna come, and that's, that's the.
I understand that, but there's no, there's no way to tell that to town meeting.
And there's no way to guarantee that they won't come either, like, you know? Like, you could have a prime real estate opportunity or something, but, you know, statistically. But yeah, I don't think, the only way to give you an out for that, for the circuit breaker idea that you're looking for, would be close monitoring of your units and your SHI, and a lot of towns, I notice, drop that ball. When they get a forty B, they, you know, they have to do it, they approve it, whatever, and then they don't watch those units to make sure they stay on the SHI. And if you don't do your paperwork correctly, they drop off in a year, or they drop off in two years, depending on how your paperwork is. So you really need to monitor your units. And when you reach your units where you're, you're at your MPDA threshold, whatever two thousand units might be, then you know, hey, I gotta call a town meeting, we gotta pull this zoning bylaw, we're all at capacity, we're all done up, or whatever, if that happens.
Except they made that clear at, at the conference Saturday, the state won't let us do that.
Well.
If we tried to do that, the Attorney General won't approve the bylaw.
What do you mean? If you were monitoring it, they wouldn't?
If we hit, if we hit our number of units, and we wanted to remove the bylaw, instead of just having a circuit breaker that says it's on hold until we need more units, we actually wanted to, to delete the overlay?
But if they were all built out, you wouldn't be able to have any more units, 'cause they would all be built out.
Well, in the, in the session I sat in, there was three representatives from the three state boards, one from the Attorney General's office, one from housing, one from whatever the HLC something, or whatever it is. They all said that there's no way the Attorney General would let you do that if you already had passed it.
Well, 'cause it's passed, that's one thing, but we're talking a different thing of having built out. You know, if it was entirely built out, and you were a hundred percent done with MPDA communities, and you.
Well, what's built out? All the land is used, or we've passed our number of units required?
Your number of units, I'm assuming? Two thousand, whatever the number would happen to be.
All right.
Yeah, that's the only thing I could tell you, is to monitor and make sure.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Nice to meet you again, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our pleasure.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate the information. I'm gonna talk about four ninety-four North Bedford before I forget what I was gonna say about that.
Uh, sure, go ahead.
So four ninety-four North Bedford Street is a, is a small commercial building that, that sits basically in that strip of land between Compass Medical Center and what we formerly knew as the Foxborough Company.
Wow.
There's a cabinet, a cabinet retailer in there, there, there wasn't, used to be a gift shop in there, there used to be a.
Cleaners, cleaners.
Cleaners was in there. There was at one point, I think, a fourth business, or maybe it was three businesses in office on the second floor. In any case, it, it came to the attention of the, there's an application right now for an apartment to be put in there, IA residential use.
Okay.
It came to the attention of the planning board back in, in the twenty-fourteen to twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen timeframe, when Ed Gardner was a building inspector, who was either just retired or within a week or two of retiring, there was already an apartment there, that had been built, technically speaking, in violation of zoning. We were unable to put a date on when that apartment was built. So, one of the difficulties in zoning is you run into that look-back time, which, depending on exactly when it was, is either seven or ten years. It, it varies depending on what the specific issue is, but in any case, although we could have argued that the apartment was built illegally, since there was nothing in our folders about it, it would've turned into a messy, probably into a court case. So, maybe against the better judgment, now that we look at it in the longer term, a special permit was granted to make that apartment legal. The applicant has now come back and, and filed for a special permit application for what amounts to a second apartment, which would now, uh, effectively, from a, from a land use law standpoint, turn that into a multifamily building. He doesn't qualify for any of the sections of the zoning bylaw for a second special permit. So what I was gonna do tonight, and I'll do right now, is I'll put a motion on the table, letting the applicant know that he has a right to file for the special, a, a special permit, 'cause anyone can file for a special permit. But we would suggest that he withdraw his, his application, because we're not gonna be allowed to approve that special permit, since there is no section of the bylaw he can cite that would allow us to do that.
So it's a motion by Mr. Gardner to. notify the owner at 494 North Bedford Street of the, um, belief that there is not an ability to grant a special permit at this time, uh, and to suggest his withdrawal. Assuming he's not willing to do that, I will schedule a hearing, and-
I, I think based on, on a fairly lengthy discussion I had with the, with the, uh, building commissioner this morning, his feeling is, I tend to agree with him, that anybody has a right to apply for a special permit. They have to make the case before the special permit granting authority that their use is similar to one of the other uses. Now, he's in the industrial zone, all the, all the allowed uses in the industrial zone are clearly industrial uses.
Right.
There, there's never been any conflict in definition between commercially-zoned property and residentially-zoned property, that's, that's one of the bright lines in zoning in Massachusetts. So that, there's never been an issue there, but, but the, the catch-22 here, I believe, is that, uh, it's his job to make the presentation before the permit, the special permit granting authority, that this is why he feels he has a right to the special permit, so. Technically speaking, I don't think we have a legal right to prejudge that, even though we basically know because of prior experience at that site. And to fix a potential long-running legal issue that we had granted him a special permit before, and he was made aware at that time that, that he was only given it because we couldn't determine whether or not the, the apartment existed long-term, even though we know it could've existed seven to ten years, but we knew it wasn't much longer than that. So, I mean, that's the basis, and, and the other part of the motion is it's, in, in my view, it's unfair to not tell him ahead of time that, if he's gonna pay the money to get all of that done, including all of the legal advertising and so forth, that, he should know that it's almost guaranteed that we have to vote the special permit down, 'cause the section he cited is a, well, and the zone doesn't allow for special permits that's, almost it's similar to one of the allowed uses.
I understand.
So... Let's phrase that.
Feel free if you, however you would prefer to phrase that.
Well, I, I, you know-
If you wanna leave that alone, and just get to the point where we have to say no at the hearing, I have no issue with that. I just, I just felt it was appropriate to let him know ahead of time.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that, um, and, and I think your, your point regarding, you know, the idea of prejudging something is, is well-taken as well. Um, but, um...
Do you want me to change the motion to say we're gonna decline to accept the application?
No.
Okay, I, I didn't think you wanted that.
I wanna go there.
Yes, okay.
So, you know, I think we would advise him of the scheduling of a public hearing, but that, you know, be aware of Section Five, uh, K... Two, I believe it is.
Be aware of the, aware of the fact that it's his responsibility to demonstrate that the use he's proposing is similar to one of the allowed uses in the district?
Fair enough.
Okay.
So that's, that's the motion then, to, to schedule the public hearing, uh, the next available date, and then to, uh, likewise advise the applicant of his responsibilities uh, under the, uh, under the applicable provision of the zoning bylaws. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Phillips, motion made by Mr. Gardner. Any further discussion there?
No.
None, all in favor of that motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, unanimous vote of all, uh, members present. So, Ellen, that would be the sixth, Ellen, sixth of May, is that right?
I hope so, yes.
So, assuming they wanna go forward, that would, uh, set that for whatever time, seven fifteen or later, and go from there. I think the only other thing on the agenda tonight, uh, there is a letter in the file with respect to 600 North Bedford Street, and that is the former Compass Medical Center, and that is just to notify the board and the town that effective on April first, Compass Way will, uh, no longer be used as a, um, uh, name for the, the access, it will become Donald's Way.
Do we know who Donald is?
I can interject at this meeting.
Donald's Way, uh, and that, uh, is, is just for informational purposes only, I don't believe that they need any kind of a formal vote of this board, uh, where the, the legal, uh, street address there is 600 North Bedford Street, and, um, the, uh, you know, the Compass Way or Donald's Way is simply a, a familiar name, if you will, uh, that's used. I don't think there are any other updates or matters that need to be discussed tonight. And unless somebody has something, uh, I will entertain a, a motion at this time.
So two, two real quick things, and then I'll, then I'll, I'll make a motion.
Yep.
First thing is that I've, I've, I've pretty much boiled down the section I wanna add at the end of the, uh, failed-to-pay-taxes-town bylaw.
Oh, yeah.
And, and that's, that's gonna be that, that, basically one additional paragraph that says that, that there's a, it'll be legal, legally worded, but the waiver process will be through to the, uh, selectman, and that it'll be based on the waiver being granted to either senior citizens and/or financial hardship.
Yeah.
So that the necessary repairs through, uh, multiple licensing issue, issuing departments, and they'd primarily be the building department, building permits, and the Board of Health for Title V systems, so that they, they won't negatively impact the market, potential marketability or livability of a piece of property, uh, and, and therefore in, increase the hardship that the owner has, who already has a hardship, because they're financially unable to pay taxes. Now, I, I've looked at some other towns that have some other requirements in their bylaw, but I think we wanna leave up to the selectman how they wanna determine whether there's actually a hardship there. I don't see any way to, to put down into the bylaw itself how you would document that. I, I, I think that should be, it's left up to the, to the authority that's gonna determine whether or not they're gonna grant a waiver. The, the main problem I have right now is that there is no language within the bylaw that would allow a waiver to be granted of the process.
Yeah.
I, I think the bylaw right now is flawed, 'cause the state law says in arrears of twelve months or more. At some point in town, in, in time, the, the town deemed it appropriate to, uh, to change that to in arrears of thirty days or more.
Oh.
Uh, even though the enabling legislation has a specific timeline in it.
I, I remember this discussion before, that we had on this issue, yeah, yes.
That's one of the planned bylaws that, to go to annual town meeting, or revisions. It's not actually a zoning bylaw, it's a town bylaw, but... One other, one other quick piece of information that, I will have some pretty final stuff by, I, I hate to say April first, but April first, for the, for the MBTA zoning district, but a, a bit of information that I picked up after the sessions in, at Holy Cross with the Citizens Planning Training Consortium, or whatever that is, CPTC, or CTPC. One of the things they raised, and I hadn't thought, although I know it, I hadn't thought about it all that much, and they were trying to come up with, with, in the, in the MBTA district seminars, uh, tools to present things to town meeting. Uh, one of the things is, and I have an actual fairly, fairly decent slideshow that we'll have for the presentations, but that slideshow sh- clearly shows that there's virtually no one-for-one impact, uh, or negative impact with additional multifamily housing going into any community. In fact, single-family homes have more, uh, school-aged children than multifamily housing does, even three- and four-bedroom multifamily housing. The other thing that they raised is that almost all of the towns in, in eastern Massachusetts, and all of the towns in southeastern Massachusetts, with just a couple of exceptions, have had decroll, uh, decreasing enrollments since the late nineteen hun- nineteen hundreds.
That is for sure.
So, yesterday, in, in my idle time, I, I quickly jumped on the computer and, and found through one of the zillions of links that are available at that C, CPTC site, uh, the school enrollments for the whole state of Massachusetts. So I quickly pulled off, and I haven't quite finished it, but I started at two thousand and two, and two thousand and three, which is the oldest audited enrollment numbers they have. In, in two thousand two, two thousand and three, we were just under twenty-five hundred students. As of twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, we have just about two thousand. So it's gone from twenty-five hundred to two thousand over that twenty-year span, despite the fact that the population in town has increased by about forty percent, and the number of housing units in town has gone up by about twenty percent. So, so there's, there's pretty clear evidence right in our own town that is, there's absolutely no direct relationship.
Yeah.
How society grows is, is, I don't wanna say totally independent of housing, 'cause, 'cause you, you can't say that, but is, is, is very disconnected from how fast housing grows.
Yeah.
It's, it's far more a society-based thing, not, it's not, not the housing market.
Smaller households, smaller, and fewer children, yeah.
Well, that's, seems to be what the, the numbers say, and the numbers don't lie, that's the, these are audited numbers from each town. Each town is required under the state law to, to submit those numbers October first, which is, which is theoretically the date that all your school enrollments are, are more than completed. So that number just, just went in late last year for this year, two thousand and eight is the specific number. But it hit just, just twenty-five hundred, it hit in, uh, two thousand and four. And it was basically the same for the first four years, twenty-four sixty-eight, twenty-four twenty-two, twenty-five oh one, twenty-five twenty-two, and then it's been going down since then. So that's one of the things that we'll have as part of our, uh, presentation. The plan is gonna be, and it's probably gonna be, the, the second meeting in May. What I was planning on doing is, is making the public presentation first here before the planning board, so that everyone here on the board can, uh, critique, and come up with the type of questions that the, the public might ask when we present it later, probably like the high school auditorium, or something like that.
Okay, yeah, that's, thank you.
So, so given that, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that one. That is made and seconded to adjourn the meeting at, uh, eight twenty-five. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.